All right.
And I'm gonna pray now, is that good with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You go pray all you want, we need it then.
Y'all ready to go?
Carl, did you give everybody a copy of that?
I call this Buckingham County Board Supervisor meeting, uh, to order. It's, uh, thirteenth day of April twenty twenty and we have a forum, we have six or seven, Mr. Jones is right here. Uh, Mr. Jones is meeting with us.
He's been there outstanding.
Personally tonight.
Do these things.
Officer Chairman, will you, uh, do the invocation? Lost, lost time please.
Go ahead and do it, not the jury.
That's fine, before he is.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you with humble hearts and bowed heads as we look to you for guidance, for answers, for relief from what we're going through in life. We're all suffering in different ways and we're all succeeding in different ways. And we pray that, and we, this each day, that you be with us in our daily struggles now and forevermore. We pray for those who are on the front lines of healthcare and those who are helping people in general and those who are suffering especially. We pray for them, we pray for their families, we pray for Buckingham and the Commonwealth of Virginia and our leaders, and we pray for the United States of America. And we ask all these things in Jesus's name as he blesses this meeting and our guidance and our actions. Amen.
Amen. All citizens of the United States, I pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free of liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion made, second, that we have approval of agenda, uh, call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Bryan?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes. Uh, unanimous, last unanimous, uh, approval of the minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
Motion made, second, in discussion, call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Bryan?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Aye, yes ma'am.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes. Project revenue losses due to, uh, COVID nineteen as well.
Yeah, yes, I would, I'm gonna ask Mr. Carter to address this. This, uh, information came into us just late this afternoon, but I think it's information you all need to see prior to, uh, starting into this budget overview. Uh, these are projections from, uh, the state, uh, also projected loss for us. So I'm gonna move back here so we're not so close together and let Carl address that to you all.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, you sure all have a page, four-page document in front of you all. Uh, we got this today from Bay Corp. There we go. All right, yes, you should have a four-page document in front of you all. We got this today from Bay Corp. And what this is, with the, you know, economy as it is right now, they've done a worksheet or a project worksheet that's showing that we use a tool to guess the make what our, uh, losses could be. And once again, let Ms. Carter say this is only an estimate. So on the first page, you can see they've estimated our total local revenue is twenty million three. Uh, of that, we have seven point eight million in real estate, real estate property, and that's our existing tax rate fifty-five percent for one hundred. And that's thirty-eight percent of our local, uh, local revenue. Turn to page, page two, you'll see personal property is estimated two point nine. That's fourteen point six percent of our local revenue. Sales taxes, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, that's three point eight percent of our revenue. We don't have to be polled. Trans occupancy taxes, your hotel tax for their, uh, local hotels, they pay for, they charge for residents to stay there. Uh, that's such a small percent of our total budget, isn't resident numbers just showing zero percent. Uh, we don't have a meals tax, and we don't have any percent of that, and our all other local revenues. And what this is, is if you look at all these numbers, you turn to the last page, page four, the first column says FY twenty revenue loss. They are projecting using this model of us losing four hundred and thirty-one thousand in current fiscal year. And once again, this is only an estimate, so I'm not shocked, but once again, this is a estimate, so it could go higher, it could go lower. But just for this current fiscal year we in now, which we have, April, we got rest of April, May, and June, those three months, they're estimating four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, we have a shortfall in revenue. If you look at the next to the last column, they're showing for FY twenty-one, which would be the whole fiscal year, over a mid, one point, about a billion dollars in loss revenue. Um, they're only showing two point one percent for FY twenty because we're already in that fiscal year, so not that many months left. Uh, but the whole fiscal year, FY twenty-one, they're showing five point two percent. So, I don't wanna scare you guys about these numbers, but these numbers could be right on, they could be higher, they could be lower. But with the situation we are right now, it's something that we need to look more carefully. And this current fiscal year, we're gonna continue tomorrow to the revenues right now to see how about the end of the fiscal year. And then the start of the new fiscal year, we'll also be getting back with you guys and give you kind of an update on where we are, if we're on schedule. And we're not on schedule, I'm gonna go off that and so forth, so. We just wanna share this with you, uh, we got this today from Bay Corp, it's a pretty useful tool. And also, they printed this model that we can change these percentages, so if we see one category is coming in better than the other, then we can adjust the numbers to reflect the tolls and so forth. So, this is an update for you guys, any questions if you guys might have.
How often do, would the county get, the county staff get updates that are like this, just out of curiosity?
We, we can do them.
Mr. Carter?
We can do them, uh, I wouldn't say do them daily because, you know, people come in at different times and pay their taxes. But definitely weekly will probably be the best way to do it, but we, our stuff runs monthly, but we can do an update weekly if we want.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That would come from us.
Right, it's come from us, sir.
All right now, I skipped over the approval claims, I need a motion on approval claims.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, second, in the discussion, call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Bryan?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes. All unanimous. I guess now's the time for the, uh, the public hearings regarding the, uh, twenty twenty-one fiscal year budget.
Yes, sir, that's, I'm already placing my bank. Bear with us a moment, we're all changing in our places here, I wanna make sure. Yes, this evening is the public hearing on the proposed two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one operating budget and tax rate. The total budget being proposed is fifty-seven million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. I present the board of supervisors as proposed budget and tax rate. And more than ever now, this statement is important that this proposed budget is contingent upon receipt of all state, federal, and local proposed revenue. This gives you the authority to change anytime that these revenues do not come in as projected. This is a balanced budget, uh, with your annual expenses not exceeding your annual revenue. Your proposed tax rates remain at real estate of fifty-five cent, public service corporation fifty-five cent, state corporation commission, personal property, four dollars and five cent, personal property, four dollars and five cent, machinery and tools, two dollars and ninety cent, merchants capital, one dollar, and aircraft, fifty-five cent. So, as you know, that some may not know, we do have tax relief programs, and this is for, for the citizens of the county to know. So if you wanna know how can you make sure you're receiving any property tax relief that you may be eligible for, uh, we have a tax stabilization for the elderly and disabled. Uh, the county has this program, this is a tax stabilization program. If a citizen qualifies, their values or tax rate will not change if reassessment goes up or if the rate goes up. Uh, this information can be obtained from the Commissioner's Revenue's Office and your application needs to be made to the Commissioner Revenue's Office. We also have a program that exempts United States veterans from paying real estate taxes if they are disabled due to their services in the United States military. So look at the budget. Our local revenues are projected to be eighteen million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and four dollars. And before I go any further, which is not on this presentation because we just received the information that Mr. Carter, uh, brought out, and that is, these numbers could drastically change. But as of right now, we will need to go with what we project and closely monitor and propose changes to the board. State non-categorical aid, one million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine fourteen. State categorical aid, one million, seven hundred and sixty-two hundred and nine dollars. Other state revenue, fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. Federal QSCB, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, two dollars. That's money that we get back from the federal government toward one of the school debt payments. School revenue, nineteen million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. VPA, which is social services, revenue, one million, seven fifty-seven, seven fifty-two. Compensated services revenue, one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars, and a transfer fund, our water fund, of two hundred thousand dollars. So we'll break down on, that's a breakdown on the revenue side. Our receipts and our beginning year reserves, uh, I might add that, uh, that the county has stayed financially strong up until now, and this is, um, good to know, and I believe the county's probably going into this problem we may have, uh, in a good financial state. But our total receipts, without the, the information we just got from the state, is proposed to be forty-four million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. Our ending year balance is proposed to be seven million dollars. Our economic development fund, which is a reserved fund, it's not revenue, but something that the county has reserved from sale of land and property in the county, is six hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Our solid waste beginning year balance, it is also money that's been reserved, it's not within the revenues of two hundred thousand. Capital improvements Fund, beginning year balance is nine hundred thousand dollars. And again, that's not part of the revenues we just talked about. Animal control reserve, beginning year balance, seven hundred and thirty thousand. Four hundred and thirty thousand, and that is grant money, the rest is reserve money. Gene Dixon Park, beginning year balance, uh, three hundred thousand left over from money that's accounting as appropriated throughout the years, and Gene Dixon Park Reserve, established, is one million dollars. So for your total budget of fifty-five million, five eighty-three, one eighty-seven for general properties, beginning in receipts and beginning in reserves. Our water and revenue, our water revenue is projected to be one million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, five twenty-four. Our sewer revenue is projected to be four hundred and fifty thousand, two eighty-four, with a total water and sewer fund, which is separate from the general fund, of one million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. So the beginning year balance is an accumulation of unspent money. I know that many question, uh, what that stands for. So it is accumulation, the beginning in your balance is a result of several things. One is not spending our entire budget amount budgeted every year. I think our departments are very conservative. This money reserve reverts back to the general fund if it's not needed. Uh, it also may be a result of some one-time money that's been received that's not considered annual revenue. For example, with the seminary, we got a very large billing permit fee. We're not gonna get that every year, so we put that into a reserve because, to, to use as one-time money, because we do not want to get into a, a problem with losing that money the next year. Uh, also, it's accumulation of money earned, keeping the money in savings that earns your interest in investments, not having cash in those CDs. And any money that is not spent in the fiscal year does revert back to the general fund. And also, I might add, it, it's a result too of very conservative management. The general fund reserve balances, so that the reserve is anticipated to be seven million dollars, and this is up eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars from the anticipated present budget. Hearing what Mr. Carter just told you, that probably pretty much could take that money. The designated reserves is three million, eight hundred and six, three eighty-five. It is accumulated designated reserves for projects, and we'll discuss it as we review the expenditures, but I might add that this money cannot be spent until it's brought back to the board of supervisors for approval to be spent. So it's good to grow your balance as much as possible for any unexpected loss of revenues or unexpected expenditures. It's important to remember the accumulated balance is not a source of annual revenue, which should not be allocated, and should not be allocated annual expenditures. And especially now with the unknowns of our economy and the revenue receipts. Uh, we are entering into a possible downturned economy and, but we're in good financial standing right now. We do not know the effects of state, federal, and local impacts will have, uh, so we'll need to monitor this closely. And I prepared this prior to getting that information earlier, but we certainly was expecting such. So now we'll take a look at the local side of the budget. And it, the decisions the state and federal government makes often affects everyone. Lots of times, the federal government will pass the mandated responsibility cost to the states, and the states will pass it on to the local government. And local government has no one to pass that cost of unfooted pedal and state mandates except to the citizens. So the budget, total budget balance, if all of this money we're gonna talk about tonight is spent, the ending year balance would be seven million dollars, or twenty-nine point four percent of our local budget. If the reserves are not spent, the ending year balance would be eleven million, four thirty-five, six forty-nine, which is thirty-six point two percent of all local budget. A po, good policy is to maintain at least ten percent of your total budget. So in a nutshell, this is where we get the ins and outs and ups and downs. Our increased local revenue was projected to be eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. Of course, this was projected before this downturn. Our decreased local revenue is projected to be two hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. And again, this is before the turn down. This is just other revenues that we'll go through and pinpoint where that loss is. So our total local increase would come from eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars to five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine thirty-one. We will get some in, our projected, again, to be increased categorical aid of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. But then we're gonna have a decrease of categorical aid of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And most of that is grant money, a good portion of that, that we got last year that we will not, or this year we will not get next year. So it brings us to a decreased categorical aid of two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. Our increased non-categorical is, is nine thousand, five hundred, and our increased federal is fifty-three thousand and two dollars. And actually, that's not really increased, it's where, I believe, Mr. Carter, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's where the, um, money for, uh, it's changed, we put it in the right categories for the, uh, the position in the EMT.
Victim witness.
A victim witness program. So we just actually moved that money around to where it really should be. So our increased expenditures are five hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. But then again, we went through, and we have decreased expenditures of six hundred and seventy-five thousand, thirty-one dollars. So total reduced, we end up with our expenditures being projected to be eighty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars less and in this present year. So our increased revenue, which you saw drop down to three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars due to loss of other revenues, and then our decreased cost, we can add eighty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars to that, brings us with a reserve contingency of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. So where, what areas are the local money changes? Our real estate, and this is due to the reassessment, uh, is projected to be six hundred one thousand dollars more. Now, although the reassessment shows we should collect seven hundred and some thousand dollars, we had to go through an estimate based on, uh, receipts that we get, based on the collection, and, uh, based on the unknowns of the, or equalization is still meeting, and tax stabilization, and the disabled veterans, we do not know how much that will be at this time. So, public service tax, this is a big downer. Uh, we're projected to receive two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars less than we are this year. That's without any rate increase, that, that, the state corporation commission is not included in our reassessment. So that's pretty much due to depreciation of machinery and also forth in, for example, the power plant, uh, down in New Canton. Our machinery and tools, uh, we're, it looks like we could get ten thousand dollars more, or would have. Palalties and interest, ten thousand more. Local sales and use tax, six thousand, two hundred and forty-three, which now certainly will take another dive. And consumer utility tax, six thousand dollars. Our bank stock taxes, ten thousand increase, taxing reportation of wheels, three thousand. Permits and other licenses, uh, minus two thousand, seven hundred. Revenue from use of money, thirty thousand dollars. Right when we start getting more interest on our money earned in our investments, is when we take the notice that. So that, again, is projected based on the money we have invested right now. Uh, revenue from use of property, uh, a decrease of twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Court costs, a decrease of six hundred dollars. Waste collection disposal permits, a decrease of one thousand dollars. Courthouse security fund, a decrease of one thousand dollars. Funds and forfeiture, an increase of three thousand, six hundred dollars. So our total change in local revenue is five seventy-seven, nine thirty-one. Our state and federal revenues, it appears to be a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars less. Though, again, was projected when times were good. Categorical aid, two hundred and forty-four, fifty-two less, and, and most of that was, uh, is the grant money we received this year, we will not receive next year. Non-categorical aid, ninety-five hundred dollars more, and federal, fifty-three thousand and two dollars, which again is the victim witness program. So our total new money was brought down to three ninety-nine, nine eighty-one. Uh, our local revenue, again, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine thirty-one, but then less state and federal, of one seventy-seven, nine fifty, brings us to that three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars new money. Increased expenditures. And I might add that most all these are pretty much mandated or something that just has to be done. Uh, Mr. Carter and I have gone through these thoroughly. The additional local electoral board and register. It's a local increase of forty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars due to the upcoming two thousand and twenty election and the change in the early voting regulations.
What did that actually do, Mr. Carter, did it, did they extend it for forty-five days?
I think so, and we have to, it's just like having the polls open forty-five days. So it's, um, you'd be paying poll workers during that time just as you would in Election Day.
So this is based on every four years, is that related?
Or whenever we have an election.
Right.
I mean, it could be every two years, it could be every year, it depends on what's, what's up. So regional jail, fifty thousand dollars operational increase and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars for the debt service. So this is based on the number of inmates that are sent to the jail from Buckingham County. Uh, it's also the, the, uh, debt service is the payment that we make toward the mandated addition that had to be done there. So, general properties, and this is all the county properties with the exception of school property. It is an increase of seventy-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. This is increased due to a salary change, a new position added this year, health insurance changes, and some repair maintenance supplies. The recreation department, twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Increase is due to change in reverting a part-time position to a full-time position during the fiscal year, and also health insurance changes. The library, fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and this is mostly, uh, increased due to the operation of a larger facility. Social services, uh, the local increase, eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollars, and this is due to county program rating in this fiscal year, that not actually in this budget, per se, additional pay for more competitive salaries for those departments. So that's a total of three hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Other local increases, uh, anything under twenty thousand dollars throughout every department except the schools. I group together, and it's seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. So we have a four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollar local, and state federal increase expenditures, a hundred and thirty-three, four sixteen. So that's where you get the total new expenditures of five hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. But that is not our local money. As we go down through, we'll see that where the, the state and federal plays into these departments. So the decrease in expenditures, the reassessment cost, we were able to take most of that out, uh, to save a hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. Information technology, uh, was thirty-seven thousand, oh thirty, decreased. Emergency services, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five oh three, and that is due to a grant money that we won't get in the next year. Fire training facility maintenance, we did reduce it five thousand dollars. We believe we have the building up to par right now, and so we didn't think we needed all the money, so we did reduce it five thousand. Refuge collection, uh, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars reduction. We had hoped for a larger reduction, but we did not get these gated sites up and running as soon as we had thought.
Is that, is that savings?
A savings.
Is that, is it due to the tenant that we're taking away from the sites, or what is it?
That's projected landfill cost, yes, sir. Uh, agency and colleges, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So that's mostly to, uh, moving the, um, Virginia Growth Alliance out of this group of expenditures and into our planning department. Uh, and there were several, that's seventeen something, there were several small reductions. Uh, and there were several, that's seventeen something, there were several small reduction, uh, increases that we will, uh, we'll go through the whole thing when we get to it. So our final results is a decrease in expenditures of eighty-four thousand, two eighty-one. There again, we come back to our reserve contingency of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, two sixty-five. So what is that reserve contingency? It is the difference between the money you have coming in annually and the money proposed to be spent annually. So that, that's, your proposed expenditures is four hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars less than your proposed revenue. And again, of course, that's before we got to wonderful news about a probably four hundred and thirty-two thousand loss this year and the million next. The school advertised budget, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Uh, this is for the two thousand and twenty-twenty-one school proposed budget with their A D M at nineteen ninety-four, which is an increase of nine students. The total advertised budget does not include any additional local funds. The school did request an additional eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars in instruction. However, this budget includes level funding for the school system. The school revenues, other than local preparation, is nineteen million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. And this is a total decrease of sixty-six thousand, twenty-nine dollars. So the difference is they look to get, and again, let's look at all the downfall here, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars more state money. Their federal is a decrease of seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four eighteen. Their cafeteria fund shows a projected increase of forty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. And their school local, which is monies they collect within the school system, but local money, is a decrease of twenty-three thousand dollars.
Ms. Carter, I have, I have a quick question. What she presented us earlier, or what Mr. Carter presented us earlier, did not include any school cuts, for the lack of a better term, it was only county revenue.
Sir?
I said that this, this, which was presented, this, this does not include any?
I think that includes, um, state revenue money too, state federal money too?
Yes, but no, no school revenue.
Right.
No school revenue.
Right. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Local school funds by categorical, uh, category, uh, local instruction, we'll, we'll, we'll come back to this. It does show that, um, the school, total school budget would propose is a decrease of sixty-six thousand, twenty-nine dollars. So instruction, the local amount is four million, eight sixty-nine, six oh four. The local administration, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, ninety-three dollars. The local transportation, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, forty-five dollars. Local transportation to buy new buses, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Local maintenance, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, ninety-seven dollars. Local debt service, which is a lease the school has, is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, a hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And local technology, three hundred and fifteen thousand, twenty-six dollars. So the total amount that the county is proposing for the schools in local money for the operations is seven million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand and two dollars. It's the same amount that you have in this present budget. So they advertise their budget by category, as you can see, I won't go through each one. But it brings their total budget to twenty-six million, seven fifty-nine, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. And of that, seven million, two seventy-one, two dollars is local money. School debt payment is total of two million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So the elementary school is two million, two thirty-three, nine sixty-eight. And we are reimbursed at four hundred and twenty-two thousand that we talked about in the federal government toward that payment. The middle school payment is seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. For a total, again, at two nine eight one eight two eight. So the total amount, school operations and facility is nine million, eight thirty, eight thirty, and local money. The board of supervisors, county administration, finance, auditors, treasurer, commissioner revenue, all this is considered under finance. Is one million, two sixty-seven, two hundred and sixteen dollars. This is a decrease of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, fifty-one dollars. A hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars of this is state, and one million, eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars is local money. Law enforcement, the total law enforcement budget is proposed at two million, three hundred and twenty thousand, twenty dollars. This is one million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars local money, and eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars state money. This represents a state increase of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and no local increase. And again, this may be one will become a back re-visiting, because I understand right now all pay increases are on hold, and I believe that's what this additional money is for. Information technology, this represents a thirty-seven thousand dollar, thirty cent decrease. The total budget is a hundred and forty-four thousand, seven sixty-six. The decrease is due to a grant project being completed, and it is all local money. We talked about the electoral board and the register, their total budget is for the electoral board and officials and register is a hundred and five thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars for the electoral board, and this is a thirty-five, seven ninety-seven local increase due to the change with the early voting and also the election coming up. And mandated cyber security controls. And this is all local money, that hundred and five thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars is all local money. The register of budget is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, sixty-seven dollars. This is twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars more, again, due to the upcoming election and early voting. This is a local increase of six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and a state increase of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. So the total amount of local money that's in this budget is seventy-three thousand, a hundred and seventy-three dollars. Our circuit court, nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, it remains the same. This is money that goes toward the judge of circuit court's, uh, office operation in several counties he serves, he serves. General district court, um, nine thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars is the same. Special magistrate, twenty-five hundred dollars, same, and this is all local money. And again, no increase. Clerk of court, their total budget is proposed at three hundred and ninety-six thousand, thirteen dollars. Is a one hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars is local funding, and two hundred and three thousand, five thirty-eight is state. So this is a total increase of four thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars overall, uh, with four thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars being a local and fifty-five dollars being state. The victim witness program is seventy thousand, six twenty-nine, this is all federal grant, and then the fifty-two, some federal that we showed you. And it, it, none of that money is local, and it's not an increase. The regional jail total budget is four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty, twenty-three dollars. And every year I reiterate that, that, you know, it hasn't been that long ago, the counties did not have to put any money into that. But, um, yeah, each year we see this increasing. So this actual cost, again, is going to be based on the number of inmates from Buckingham that are housed. How many days are housed, and we can only budget based on expense history. This can go up or down, and I'm having constant regional jail budget meetings with the, the jail authority and the county administrators to try to help that cost to each locality. So it is a fifty thousand dollar increase in the jail operations and forty-nine nine twenty-three for the debt portion. General properties has a proposed increase of seventy-five, four sixty-seven, it's all local money. And the total budget is six seventy-two, nine forty-four. The regional juvenile detention is forty thousand dollars. It does not show any increase, it is all local money. And again, this has to be monitored closely, because it's based on the number of, of juveniles in Buckingham County that is sent to the, uh, juvenile detention home. Commonwealth's attorney, the total budget is five hundred and thirty thousand, three seventy-two. Uh, three hundred and seven, one ninety-five is state money, and two hundred and thirty-three thousand, one seventy-seven is local. This represents a state increase of ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars due to some, I believe, new positions that the state has, um, provided and maybe some reclassifications. But the emergency services, uh, again, that's no local increase. Emergency services, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Forty-six thousand is state salary money that reimburses part of the salary. A hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars, other local money. And this is an increase in local money of two thousand and eight dollars, it's mostly due to health insurance. You'll see as we go through there, and now then I'll say health insurance increase. Our county health insurance did go up, what was the percentage?
Four point nine.
Four point nine percent. But we've tried to absorb this in most cases, instead of coming to you all and saying, we need four point nine percent more money based on the total, uh, health insurance. We try to absorb it wherever we can. Rescue squad, same money at two hundred and one thousand, two hundred. The volunteer fire department, five hundred and seventeen thousand, a hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This is a five thousand dollar decrease, again, due to the fire training facility money. Fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars is state fire programs money, and we distribute that between each fire department. Four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars is local money. And we distribute that as follows. Deo One, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Arbonia, a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Glenmore, a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Toga, a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Lower Francisco, six thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And Gladstone, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And again, there's al- also ten thousand dollars that's allocated for the fire training facility operations, and a thousand dollars for reimbursement of county decals to volunteers. Forest fire prevention, twenty-seven thousand dollars is local level funding that we pay to the Virginia Department of Forestry. Building inspector, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and five dollars for the department. It's a eight thousand, ninety-two dollars increase, mostly due to change in health insurance. So this isn't exactly all the increase, but I believe one of the employees had a change in, in the, um, level insurance. Animal control, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine eighty-three is an increase of seven hundred and nineteen dollars, and again, mostly due to insurance. Medical examiner is the same local money of two hundred dollars. Street lights, the same local, uh, it is local money of four thousand, three hundred, but we did have to add a hundred increase there due to additional likes at the Salt Lake sites. Solid waste, uh, collection and, and monitoring, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars. A decrease of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. And I might add that over the, the, this year and next year, this is a, a projected reduction of eighty thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. And we attribute that a lot to the way, the changes in the sites and, and, and the way that's to be done. The antilitterate state grant, two thousand, six hundred dollars. The library is proposed to increase fifty-nine, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that's, of course, due to operation of a larger facility and some personnel changes. Two hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars is the total library local preparation. Two thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars with health department, uh, increase towards the county's portion of the state salary increases, which may not be needed if the state was not give the salary increases, but the total money that the county proposed to give to the health department was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So contribution to colleges and agencies. And I will go down through each one, I know this is a lot, but for those that may be watching that want to know how much money has been proposed in each of their budgets, the crossroads services board is forty thousand. That is their request, and that is level funding. Piedmont senior resources, fifteen thousand, nine nineteen. That is an increase for their request of one thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Payment to cadre, two thousand, five hundred dollars is the same. Peter Francisco Soil and Water Conservation, a twelve thousand dollars, is the total amount. Two thousand dollars is an increase. And I might add, they haven't asked for an increase in many, many years. And they do a lot to help us going over our storm water management and our, uh, erosion of large plants. Uh, okay, uh, Virginia Crossroads, four thousand, five hundred is the same amount. Ellis Acres Memorial Park, five thousand dollars, same amount. Buckingham Active Seniors, five thousand. Christian Outreach, three thousand. South, Southside Community College, eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. It is an increase of, um, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And that's based on the number of county residents that go to school at Southside Community College. Uh, Buckingham After Prom, three thousand dollars. Piedmont Community College, one thousand, hundred and seventy-three dollars, and this is a one dollar increase. Jot, forty thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars, an increase of two thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Piedmont Area Transit, the same, that's ten thousand dollars. Depths, twenty-eight thousand, one sixty-five, the same amount. Virginia Legal Aid is a two hundred and eighty-four dollar increase of seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that is submitted based on the number of county residents they serve. Hatton Ferry, two thousand dollars. Longwood Small Business Center, the same, at five thousand, eight forty-nine. Longwood Center for Visual Arts, one thousand, sixty-three dollars. Southside Center for Violence, five thousand dollars. Uh, Pregnancy Center, three thousand dollars. Tri Ed, twenty-five hundred dollars. And Fluke Hill Adversity Center, three thousand dollars.
Do we vote, do we vote, do veterans, people on here, the veterans filed it?
For what?
The veterans.
She did not make a budget request.
Oh, she didn't?
At last, when you all gave that money, I think it was, uh, she came during the budget year and asked for an appropriation. But she was sent the information, I believe, but she did not submit a request. So if she comes, she may come back, I expect her to come back later.
Okay.
But we did not get a request.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Carter, um, I was told over the weekend that Hatton Ferry, uh, has closed, and they don't anticipate on opening back up. That came from Martha Lewis, the, uh, president of Historic Buckingham Incorporated, so I'm just passing that on.
Okay.
I apologize if I've been out of.
I was under impression previously, maybe they would save this money to try to get back open, so she says they're not going to open.
That's what, that's what she, uh, reiterated to me over the weekend, that the cost of inspection, when it comes to inspecting that vessel, for the lack of a better term, the ferry, would be astronomical.
Well, next week you all might want to take that out, if that's the case. Okay, let's see. Commonwealth Regional Council, the same, it's nineteen thousand dollars. Planning and zoning, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five, is an increase of two thousand, a hundred and thirteen dollars. Now we did add the V G A money of seventeen thousand in this department until you all decide whether you remain or, or get out. Uh, but changes in healthcare insurance in the department with this net increase of two thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars. Uh, Buckingham County Arts Council, nine thousand dollars, this is the same amount of, of local at forty-five hundred dollars for local money and forty-five hundred dollars for state grant. Parks and Recreation, two hundred and fifteen thousand. Parks and Recreation, two hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. This is twenty-three thousand, five hundred, twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars difference due to change in health insurance plan and a change in the park town employee being granted full-time status. Industrial Development Authority, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. A hundred and eighty-one thousand, one seventy-six is the sewer debt payment, the upgrade of the sewer plant. And a hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars is for the Library Community Center debt payment. This is a decrease of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. And this is due to the change in the library reserve and the actual library debt payment. So the debt payment is actually sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eight dollars next year, less than the two hundred and fifty thousand that we proposed. It probably will average out at two fifty, but this is for the next year. So the Library Community Center money has been in that reserve for many years, and we have moved that out now actually into a account that we can pay out of. The Extension Service, ninety-five thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. It's a two thousand, one hundred and nine dollar increase. And it again is for county portion of pay increases. Fixed Charges, three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. This does not represent an increase. It does have some money in there for the possible salary adjustments of some of the county employees, but given the situation, that will stay until we see how things go and the board decides what they want to do about that. It does have to be voted on again before it can be spent. Self-supportive capital improvements. So, and I gotta say, these are some fund balances we're very proud of, and what's coming up to us is very disappointing because you all have managed so well and stayed so financially strong that we do have these balances. For their ACO improvements, facility improvements, seven hundred and thirty thousand. Four hundred and thirty thousand of that is the grant money. Gene Dixon Park improvements, three hundred thousand. This is left over. Each year for ten years, the county appropriated a hundred thousand dollars. Then they got down to the three hundred thousand, and that wasn't enough to finish what needs to be done. So we didn't spend it, saved it. And then an additional reserve proposed for Gene Dixon Park, the entire project of a million dollars. And again, that's not your annual revenue, that is a reserve balance. Other capital improvement reserves, nine hundred thousand. That's a lot for some courthouse projects that has to be done. We have a couple major projects within the courthouse that needs to be taken care of and any other capital projects of repairs and maintenance that may come up. Solid Waste Reserve, we have two hundred thousand because we do have some more projects we're doing with that, with our sites. We hope to, by the end of this fiscal year, have six seventeen completed, and it only leaves Dillon to do. And then you will have all your sites gated site, so we've come a long way. Economic Development Reserve, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. And again, that's not revenue, that's sale of timber, sale of property, sale of our building. So that's a reserved amount there. Your commitments and assignments to your fund balance, we have a reserve of twenty thousand dollars for fire training, fire rescue training incentives. We decreased this ten thousand dollars from thirty to twenty because they haven't asked for any of it, that they're not using it. So County Vehicle Reserve, twenty-five thousand dollars. And with that, we will use it on a schedule that Mr. Carter's prepared of maintaining our fleet. An additional transfer of one hundred thousand dollars is added to the animal control facility. So we already have three hundred reserved in local money, four hundred and thirty grant donation. And this eight hundred and thirty-three dollars could be used for this mandated expense of a new animal control facility without having to borrow money. It would add another hundred thousand at our estimation. Again, given the crisis we're going into, the project may be, have to be held up for a while. An additional million dollars is transferred to the Gene Dixon Park Fund for a total reserved amount of one million, three hundred thousand to hopefully complete that park renovation plan of adding the lights, the new concession stand, and the restroom. Again, this is accumulated funds, it is not part of the annual revenue. Again, that is a project that will be brought back to you all, so it will depend on what's going on to release that money. Again, this project keeps the county from having to borrow money to complete that project. Your VPA, Public, Virginia Public Assistance, which is your social services, your total state and federal is a thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollar increase to one million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. The local money is five hundred and thirty-eight, sixty-seven. Again, that's the eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollar increase that's already been granted, and so their total budget is two million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six nineteen. Comprehensive Services, and again, this is a moving target. This can, this depends on what's, what, how many, we have the coverage of services. But as of now, the state is projected to be one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. The local is three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine nineteen for a total, a change of one million, five ninety-two, four sixty-one. And we prefer to leave the local like this, as we've always done, and would come back to you all if, if our mandated local amount should increase. It's all mandated. Transfer to General Fund from our Water Fund, two hundred thousand. And this is a transfer from the Water Fund to supplement the office space, staff, and water and sewer filling department that we have here in this building. So again, our water and sewer fund is a total of one million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. It represents a one million, two hundred and eighty-four, three sixty-five decrease in the sewer due to the money being transferred from Enterprise Fund to Paper's Profit's Corner, and that will be done. So that's the decrease in sewer. The courthouse debt payment, which is the only debt that the local government actually has, local general fund, is five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars, and that's a decrease of five hundred and seventy dollars. The Board of Supervisors cannot make any changes. Our adopted Zeratul budget tax rate for at least seven days. The meeting is scheduled to reconvene on Monday, April twenty-second, at six o'clock P.M. to consider final adoption of the budget and tax rates. And to the public that are listening, I thank you for your interest in learning how your taxes are being spent. We prefer you know the facts, and we sure try to present those. Chairman Bryant will now open the public hearing for any public comments we may have received.
Okay. So open now for further comment you have.
We've received one on the budget. It's for Quinn Robinson, District Four. He said, "I was not able to locate a copy of the budget on the county's website. One might have thought it to be a document worth including. If it is there, it is not identifiable to me. Transparency should not remain, should not mean invisible or require citizens to locate a copy in the form of an arrow. I would like to see a twenty-five percent reduction of the budget by reducing that percentage from the school system and from law enforcement. These two functions do not seem to be making much progress toward their objectives. No action on the budget until the assessment is adjusted. The assessment does not reflect that there are some twenty million people unemployed by poor leadership and administration. How can assessments for property rise when we have just witnessed a major collapse in our economy? It is not honest to just overlook this matter. Who could or would sell their land in this environment? Who would finance such a mortgage? The most recent assessment should be immediately reduced by thirty to forty percent of what was derived from this flawed process. In fairness, get it right. The mumbling at the so-called emergency meeting was sheer contempt for the public. There is a desperate need for some instruction in this type of meeting. The audio was erratic and the images were not in focus. The chairman did not seem to recognize other board members to speak. It was a free-for-all. To whom are you speaking? To one another or to the people of the Buckingham?
Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
Excuse me, but I don't believe those comments have anything to do with the public hearing.
Okay. Do you?
He had it as subject, that it was on the budget, but we would like to clarify that that budget is included in the board packet information that you're looking for.
And it's also under the finance tab also.
And in detail on the minutes with the work session. So there's several items, places that that information is.
That was the only one on the budget.
Do we have anyone that wants to call in?
No other comments on this budget? Well, I guess we carry this.
Ms. Carter.
Yes, sir.
Did you get an email from Mr. Schlegel?
Yes, but that's on the tax rate, the reassessment of it.
Any other comments? Yeah, there's, I thought the hearing closed now.
We have to wait seven days.
Yes, sir.
I guess the next one is general would be the carry regarding the proposed tax rates and ledgers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is on the reassessment public hearing. The proposed rate is, in this budget, is still the same at the present rate of fifty-five cent real estate, fifty-five cent public service corporation, state corporation commission personal property, four dollars and five cent. Personal property, four dollars and five cent. Machinery and tools, two dollars and ninety cent. Merchants' capital, one dollar. And aircraft, fifty-five cent. To date, the reassessment results are as follows, and it's important to remember, the Board of Equalization is still scheduling meetings, or can still schedule meetings. And we do not have the results of any of their terminations at this time. While the overall reassessment increase is an average ten percent increase, it is important to remember, not everyone received a ten percent increase. Some received higher and some lower. Some did not see increases at all, but they received some decreases, and we have heard from a few of those. But it, but the overall is ten percent. So, and also it's important that in that amount, it includes any new additions, remodels, or new construction in the last year. So our differences, our total current year values, and this is the reassessed values, is one million, one billion, nine hundred and fifty-two million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The previous year values is what we're on right now until the end of June, in this budget, is one billion, seven hundred and seventy-five million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. So the difference in the values there is a hundred and seventy-six million, five hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. But of this, we do have tax exempt property that we have to take out of this. So the total tax exempt current values is three hundred and seventy million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. And the previous tax exempt values was thirty, three hundred and thirty-six million, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So we have a difference in tax exempt values of an increase of thirty-three million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. And I believe the majority of that's going to be seminary because that is tax exempt new construction. So your total increase in values is a hundred and seventy-six million, five hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Or in terms of money, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. But then we have to take away what that tax exempt value is of thirty-three million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred. So we have to take away a hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars of that money. So it brings your taxable different, your taxable difference down to seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars. The seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars does not include any changes the Board of Equalization has or will have made. It does not include any new tax stabilization for the elderly and disabled or any new relief for the disabled veteran. It is numbers based on if all the taxes are complete, collected, and for those reasons, for all these reasons, for budgetary purposes, I have anticipated to put a six hundred thousand dollar number in there for additional revenue. And that also is based on collection history. So the proposed reassessment new penny money is we get a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty, fifteen dollars per penny. The previous year before the reassessment, we're getting a hundred and forty-three thousand, one fifty-nine. So if all taxes are collected, and if, and again, this may go down depending on the acts of the Board of Equalization, tax stabilization and relief for disabled veterans. So it's important to remember, the state corporation tax has to be the same as the real estate. The state corporation values are not assessed with the real estate reassessment. It's assessed by the state corporation commission. So for every penny loss of real estate, the county will also, well, will experience a loss of fifty-six thousand dollars, state corporation tax. So for every penny you may look to lower the additional revenue from this reassessment, we would need to add a fifty-six thousand dollar onto that, which would bring it to two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars for any penny that you would lower. So the county is already experiencing a two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollar decrease from the state corporation commission presently at the rate. So this would be in addition to that. Dollar-wise, how will this affect the property taxpayer? And it's hard to determine because everyone receives different percentages, pretty much. But for every hundred dollars increase in the value of a property owner, fifty-five cent per year would pay twenty-seven dollars and fifty cent per half. It would be fifty-five cents per year tax increase, or twenty-seven and a half cents per half. For every one thousand dollar increase in the value of the property owner, they would pay five dollars more a year, or two dollars and fifty cent per half. So as, depending on how many thousands of dollars their property increased, that is the way it would be determined their money, their tax due would go up. Again, the Board of Supervisors can't make any changes or take any action regarding this matter for at least seven days following this hearing. And Chairman Bryant will now open the public hearing for comments.
All right, the board, there's an hour for comments on the tax rate. So have you got any?
We have one. At Schlegel, District Three. "This is not the time for the Board of Supervisors to increase the tax burden of the taxpayers of Buckingham County. With the layoffs and business closings, how are the taxpayers expected to pay the current money, one time, much less the proposed increase? Those in the county that do not have access to the internet with their lack of decent service and don't subscribe to the..." and don't subscribe to the Farmer Herald, will not have a say on the added burden. Two taxpayers that spoke in public comment at the last meeting said their increase was close to seventeen percent. My assessment increased to almost seventeen percent, so even with the equalized tax rate, I'll be paying more than last year. There are probably quite a few others that will see an increase. The county already has a balance carry forward of seven million dollars plus four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in the contingency fund. There are also funds left over from the past fiscal year due to the closing from the coronavirus. School utilities, fuel, certain salaries, transportation, operations, cafeteria expenses, and federal money, not used, just to mention a few. I would hope during this difficult time in our history that the board would consider the equalized tax rate and not burden the taxpayers with an increase. Thank you and God bless Buckingham County and our great nation. The taxpayers need your help.
Is that all you have on that? Well, that's all we have. We are glad that the assessment, that our current tax race, uh, here will be closed. I think the next thing on the agenda is, uh, the county of Buckingham, hereby provides notice to Buckingham County Public Library, the government, that still an application for funding with the USDA rule development to purchase new IT and security equipment for the Buckingham branch library to use at its new location, and if all of them are in progress, Google. Ms. Carter, you have anything to add to that?
Yes, that's pretty much what you said, is a rule development grant, and the Commonwealth Regional Council's assisting them in making application. And it is required that the local government have a public hearing in order to qualify for this grant and take formal action.
You want to set up this public hearing for the next board meeting?
This is the hearing for that.
Okay, okay. The hearing for the, uh, notice, intent to apply for funding for the Buckingham branch library.
We have one, Pat Hallow, District Four. Members of the Board of Supervisors, I would encourage you to approve the grant application by the Commonwealth Regional Council on behalf of the Buckingham County Public Library Board for the new library IT equipment to move forward. The Buckingham County Public Library Board is responsible for the purchase of furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the new library. We have been raising funds for over ten years and are still raising funds. The current state of the COVID-19 has curtailed our efforts this year by the Buckingham friends of the library having to cancel two fundraisers and events. The spring fundraiser planned for April and baskets raffle during Mayfest. Not having these events has put a dent in their fundraising efforts. Seeking and hopefully receiving outside resources can only be seen as a positive move. If the library board receives the grant money, it can only be a win-win situation for the library and the county. Thank you, Pat Hallow.
That all?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I guess now we, uh, we need a motion to pursue to, uh, first need to close this, uh, public hearing. Public hearing closed.
Do we need any action on this, Mr. Chairman, or Ms. Carter?
Yes, we need action for you to officially support this grant application.
I would make a motion to that effect, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions or any responses?
I'd like to just add that anytime we can get, uh, a grant for what we're doing with the new public library is just, uh, putting us a little bit of ahead in this very trying times because, uh, with the taxes and, uh, the way the economy is going, so I think hats off to, to the library committee and their, and the friends of the library who will try to reach out to CRC to help them write this way and receive this one. So, uh, we're, we're about a hundred percent.
I agree.
I agree. Any other comments? Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Brian?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
And I think the next thing on the agenda was, uh, from Scott Frederick, President of the D. I think all of those things are put on hold, am I correct, Ms. Carter?
Yes, sir, but.
Would you motion to both of them?
Well, we have already canceled the public hearing with the newspaper and on our website. Uh, but Mr. Frederick has said, at first said he needed to push everything back to at least June 10. But he did say that if we could do it like we're doing it now, that he can call in and we can do the public hearing in May, if it's your pleasure. We'd have to re-advertise it again and have it for May. Or you can do it in June, tell her you confirm.
Would you please, the board, you want to put it off until, uh, do it in May?
I think we, yeah.
We need a motion for that, or?
We've got the capability to do that, Ms. Carter, is that right to have the?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just be known that the public can call in while we're holding the meeting if they have any questions at the public hearing, so it doesn't have to be written, it can be phoned in, so.
An email?
An email.
So we'll have that public hearing, oh, in May, regular meeting.
So we would need a motion to advertise.
We need a motion for that?
So move to, to establish the public hearing will be made for, uh, what will be the date of that?
All right. I don't know what day.
May eleventh?
May eleventh for the B-Dot, uh, public hearing on big matters.
I'd second that, Mr. Chairman.
Our president in discussion. Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Brian?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried, you animals. I guess the next thing on the agenda is, uh, is, is it Edmiston?
Yeah, now I will step, let her come down and speak here so we can keep our social distance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The matter before you for economic development needs to be tabled at this time.
So.
Second.
We're going to table K one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's not our question.
Okay.
Table to our May.
Till April twentieth, next Monday's meeting.
April twentieth.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Go.
Have you been called?
No. Here we go. Okay. How do you table?
Where's the motion to table?
You don't need to make a motion.
You don't need to take any action.
Okay, all right, no problem.
Take any actions from the table, come on in.
Okay. I guess the next thing on the agenda is, uh, approval to advertise, see bids to paint. We did it in October. Ms. Carter, you have any?
Yes, sir. In October of nineteen, the board did approve for us to advertise and receive bids to paint the elevated storage tanks. The bids also included the installation of mixing equipment to help assist with producing the chlorine byproducts in the county's distribution center. We did advertise that project and we didn't receive any bids. But as a result of this, we decided to wait for better weather and reevaluate and re-advertise the project. And we did so in March of two twenty. Result of the advertise yielded five bids. We've attached the bids, uh, there for you, and a letter of recommendation from our engineer to award this contract to the low bidder. The low bidder is G and L Tank with a bid of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And this money would come from the Water Enterprise Fund. I ask you to consider the low bid of C L, C and L Tank, for three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
We have a motion to, uh, if the board takes, uh, on this, Mr. Chairman, sorry. Any, any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Brian?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried, you animals, uh, bill. I guess the next thing on the agenda is emergency orders allowed for the continued of the government operations during the pandemic, including altering the process of conducting public meetings, restricting the use of public buildings or facilities, providing additional powers to the Director of Emergency Management to incur costs, waive procedures, and take other temporary actions, and suspending deadlines and procedures.
Yes, sir. Presently, we are under an emergency, uh, situation where you all declared and approved, uh, our emergency ordinance to allow for continuity to have level of government operations, uh, and, but however, I think that is due to expire in May. So the board would need to schedule a public hearing, uh, for an emergency ordinance to allow for the continuity of our government operations, uh, including altering the process for conducting public meetings, restricting the use of public buildings and facilities, providing additional powers to the Director of Emergency Management to incur costs, waive procedures, and take other temporary actions and suspending deadlines and procedures. This is all the same of what we're operating under right now. However, to be able to continue it, we, you will need to have a hearing to officially adopt this ordinance, and we have provided you with a draft ordinance in the package.
Ms. Carter, would we have to have that on April twentieth or during the May eleventh meeting?
We'd have to have it in May because we have to advertise in two consecutive weeks.
I'm like motion that we have the public hearing with everything under M one stated.
Second.
On May eleven.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we advertised this and, uh, it voted on in, uh, May the eleventh. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
All right.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Brian?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
Uh, motion carried, you animals, we have a public hearing on the eleventh. Other question that brings us now back before you to reconsider an out of school warrant to Carol with a hundred and forty thousand dollars from Daltone eighteen nineteen, she found two persons, two special educational vans. Mr. Palmer, opposed to being, and said he's in need of two educational vans. And he said that, uh, there was something that, I know Mr. Palmer does a good job, he never has asked anything that he didn't really need, so.
I'd like to add that Dr. Hicks contacted me when she saw on the agenda, and I listed that wrong to you. Actually, the transportation fund being requested to purchase one special education bus and two vans in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I want to clarify, I was an error.
Okay, she added, uh, one special education bus, two vans, is that correct? I can't answer my motion, Ms. Chairman.
Then I'll second it, Mr. Chairman. I've talked to Mr. Palmer, uh, twice, and it does seem like in the fleet list that, that the division gave us during the last budget meeting, we had, um, a sixty-seven, you'll see, is an O five Thomas spin bus, and it does have right minimum miles on it, probably over two hundred and thirty thousand now. And the other two includes an old, um, law enforcement vehicle and a van that's got over two hundred and sixty thousand miles on it.
Is motion made and seconded? Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I got something to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I'm just going to reach out to, uh, Dr. Hicks and the school division. I'm going to get behind this, a hundred and forty thousand dollars for two vans and one bus. But I'm also going to reach out to them. With the cost of buses, the way they are in this day and time, at ninety thousand to a hundred thousand dollars apiece, I'd like for them to do a study to see how much it would cost to replace an engine from an outside vendor like Sonny Merriman, or they can do it in-house, but it would save the county a tremendous amount of money. That's all I've got to say.
Well, yeah, but must have got to have more than a motor.
Mr. Chairman, we've been over this. We went over this several years ago. The National Transportation Safety Board took into effect also the wear and tear on the chassis of the bus. So just, that's like putting lipstick on a pig.
Right.
So you still have a pig. You know, if all you're going to do is change the engine in a bus, great, but what about, what about the chassis on that bus that has two hundred and ninety-eight thousand miles on it?
If it needs to be replaced.
NTSB has recommended that.
Replace it, I don't mind doing that.
They need to replace the bus.
But you can look at it from a, from a, uh, from another standpoint, and if it doesn't need to be replaced.
Probably been down this road, Mr. Matthews.
We have. We're going down it again.
Well, motion seconded, uh, the, uh, the Carol won money for a hundred and forty thousand dollars for two vans and a, and a special ed bus. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Brian?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Carter, I guess you spoke with, with Dr. Hicks regarding the scale or request.
Yes, um, and I had picked up the hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the adjut, for the, um, cafeteria fund carryover. And I think we do have to allow that carryover, because that's not just local money. And so, but it actually, the hundred and seventeen thousand, twenty dollars is the adjustment from their original budget. So the total amount of carryover for cafeteria is requested at two hundred and ninety-two thousand and twenty dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, cafeteria fund, school fund. Any discussion?
Only question I would have is overall is, how much money have we saved since the school was open for so long? On like, these a few for the buses?
I don't know.
People have been taking everybody, I haven't saved any money, but I still, I'm still looking forward to doing, I'm just saying.
They can't answer that question yet, but. Not just that, but is, you're still providing meals, am I right, Mr. Brown? Not just that, but is, you're still providing meals, am I right, Mr. Brown, on a daily basis?
I think now.
They're doing it one day a week?
One day a week.
Yeah, they're doing it one day a week at the middle school now. They were going to satellite sites. Now it's just one day a week.
I do have a question that.
But I'm, I'm like you, Mr. Matthews, I, I would like to know.
I would too.
Because they're only working two days a week now, from what I understand. But I'd like to know the savings that are being.
The other, the other thing I would bring up too, that Mr. Allen touched on, is if you're only doing it one day a week, why would this, why would the buildings not be on what's called unoccupied status? I mean, you can, you can change that with a computer, can't you, just like we do here at the county office? You can change the, the heat, the air conditioning, whatever. But I think those things, if you're only doing it one day a week and you have staff in there sporadically, why shouldn't it be on unoccupied status and then you change it according to scheduling, I guess is what I would say. Is that, is that possible?
I, ours is on a schedule to go into unoccupied every evening unless we have a meeting.
You hear it that way?
It's programmed.
You talking about here in this building?
Yes.
I'm talking about the school building.
And, and during the day.
That's why I'm saying, if they have the same system like we have, it can be programmed at least at night to go into unoccupied.
I was led to believe they haven't gone to that yet, so, I mean, we're a month into this situation.
I don't know either, no way.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Brian?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried. You announced. I'm going to help, just to Ms. Carter, move. Everybody on that, Ms. Carter.
Yes, sir. As you all know, you all did not take action to approve the full carryover for the school at our budget meeting. So Dr. Hicks has pretty much asked what direction we'd like them to proceed to continue and review the consideration of the carryover request and the capital projects proposed for this money to be used. Dr. Hicks asked, of course, after we get through the COVID nineteen, if you would want to schedule a work session with both boards to review the request. And also, we discussed the possibility that, that, and I brought this up, that the board may wish to consider appointing a board member to the school's capital improvements committee to have input in to help bring back the recommendation. Currently Supervisor Brian is on that committee as school staff, so legally you could put one more board member. She seems to think that may be a good idea, but she's asking your direction of how you want to proceed.
Now, I was originally put on that board as part of the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Back to Mr. Davis ran that. I was there as the board representative.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Carter, how much money is left over after that roughly? Do you have any ideas? Is there, do they carry on?
I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Okay.
Most all of it now is capital, the capital improvements money.
Sure.
Most all of it. Very little bit in administration, I believe, with some software, computer software and one of the whole thing. But other than that, it's all this, the real thing, all this capital.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'd like to.
Ah, yes, sir. It was a brother, Brandon, I mean, it was Ted and Warren, I was, I didn't recommend which.
I'd like to schedule a joint meeting also with the school board to discuss your carryover money.
Can I, can I add something to that, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to task you to prioritize your improvements, you know, like we talked about.
With an updated cost list as well. Yes, sir. I, I, I wholeheartedly agree.
I mean, you're, you're looking at really hard times right now, not just for the school division, but for all of our citizens and.
Right.
And I just think it'd be appropriate to maybe not get everything this year that you think you may need, but see what we have to have and move from there.
All right, go.
What, a motion for that, do we, Ms. Carter?
It's the, the action you're considering is to have a joint.
Just to have a joint meeting.
Work session.
Yes.
Now or after, I think.
Well, after the COVID.
After COVID.
Right.
It's a motion.
Just to sit on the money for now and have a joint meeting.
Yeah.
But when we have that joint meeting, I would like an updated cost from the school.
Real number.
Real numbers for their, for their top five things that are on the capital improvement list. That's my motion.
Do you want another board member to be away with you?
I'm sorry?
You want another board member to be away with you?
Uh, Mr. Chambers said that he would serve one.
All right, Mr. Chambers agreed to be away with him, is all.
Okay, I think with that, you do need to motion.
I move to appoint.
When, I, I have a motion right now.
Oh, excuse me.
To schedule a work session and to have the school come with their top five priorities with an updated cost list.
Sorry. All right. I got a motion that we, we have a joint meeting with the school board. Mr. Brown, I think explained it very well.
About the supervisor's name.
So, any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Brian?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried. You announced.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Reverend Joe Chambers as the second supervisor to the said committee.
Motion made and seconded.
Right.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Chambers, the only, the, along with, that's the only supervisor with Don Brown. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Brian?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
Last thing we got, I guess, is emergency need for additional rescue squad providers.
Sir.
Ms. Carter, I think you voted.
Yes. Yeah, I'd, I'd like for you to take action, though, official action, this is action that I took based on the authority you invested in me during our emergency declaration, but we had found that, as many of you may have known, our rescue squad volunteers stepped back, and they're not taking any calls during this time. So we found a need due to the larger amount of calls to need more rescue squad EMS services. So we have, we contracted with DRT and Cody and Mr. Wright, who very, very hard, definitely worked on a proposal, agreed upon a proposal, to provide a twenty-four seven crew contracting directly with the county. The county will receive the cost recovery from that, however, it has to pass through the rescue squad, and the rescue squad had signed an agreement to send that to the county. Also, it is hopeful, very much so, that we would get the rest of the money that we're having to pay back through FEMA as a recovery based on this federal disaster. But the contract is for fifty-five thousand dollars a month. As I said, this provides a twenty-four seven crew with a vehicle. So it's five thousand dollars a month for DRT to provide the rescue squad vehicles, to provide the fuel, insurance, medical supplies, everything to equip that vehicle. We have opened up the Glenmore Squad in order to have room for this twenty-four seven crew. And Mr. Cody Davis has worked very hard getting that building opened up, cleaned, and equipped for this crew. So, but since I took this action under authority you invested in me, I still would like to have you all, I'd like a public record of my action, so I'd ask you all to confirm that.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to continue this, our authority, I guess that's what it is. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Brian?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
Motion carried. You announced. Thank you.
I like the idea that the Glenmore Squad building is open enough to give us a little more variety.
Coverage.
Yeah.
Have any other board members?
Oh.
Your number six.
Number six. And, and Mr. Davis made me aware today that they, Dominion has been there, and Tommy, our building inspector, met with them, but they're not able to get the drawing back to us by this evening, clear of consideration. So perhaps they'll have it by next Monday, so we do not need any action on this, this Under County Administrative Report, I'd like to ask Mr. Davis, the Whoops County Attorney First.
I know, I meet you. That's quick.
You're not Mr. Wright.
And I'm again, I'm again going to step aside due to the social distancing and ask Mr. Cody Davis to come down here and give you all a report and update on where we are with COVID nineteen as of today.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Davis. So, heard the email that sent earlier today, we are at sixteen cases here in the county. There's some discrepancy between the direct report that I received from Health Department staff and what the website posted today. The website said fifteen, well, the website said sixteen, but the staff reported sixteen. As of last week, the staff report had been a little bit more credible, so I'm going to continue to go with that. So I would say our number's definitely sixteen. We are the highest county in our health district in terms of case count, which is odd because of the, one, one of the other counties in this district has two colleges and a Walmart in it. So unfortunately, we did not see the seventy-two hour fast community spread that Ms. Carter and I warned you guys about at the emergency meeting, but we did start to see the doubling in case count over two point four days. We were following that trend, trend line rather perfectly. Until last week, we leveled off at eleven cases for like three days, so that was hopeful. And then over the weekend, we shot up from eleven to sixteen. I think we're back on the rise, unfortunately, but, you know, thanks to you, to your support and the teamwork here, we've been able to put some good stuff in place, you know, like that rescue squad, to be able to handle what may come, hopefully will not come, but what may come. And to that, it, it wasn't just me, but the whole staff here really came together to make that happen. Other than that, Ms. Carter, anything else? I think here, our operations have adjusted appropriately to ensure the safety of all staff members, so that we don't end up losing everybody to quarantine unaffectedly. We kind of staggered stuff appropriately. Other than that, we just kind of keep rolling with the punches, trying to stay on our two feet. Any questions from you guys?
Where, where is the testing taking place for these people? Is the testing possible for this? Is it the health department?
Yeah, mostly it's at all of the, the hospitals, emergency rooms. I do believe that the health center will do testing as well. And then also, there's a couple of different kinds of tests. There's the rapid test that UVA is offering. I don't think there's a lot of faith in the results of that test just yet, so they're still relying on the kind of longer test that, you know, takes a week or two to get the results back on at most emergency rooms, and I think what that are able to administer.
Mr. Davis, where's the hospital in the county at? Do we have one? But, but in certain areas, just want to get that one off?
My information is, is, is fairly limited in regards to location of the cases. At this point, I do believe that we've pretty well started to spread out across the county.
Okay. Thank you.
How important is it, Mr. Davis, or Ms. Carter, whoever wants to answer this, in, in, in terms of the importance of social distancing and wearing masks? I've had some people ask about that, especially the mask part. I'm okay right here.
Look, the mask thing is a little, there's some controversy regarding that, you know, really the key is social distancing. Going out in the public and thinking that you're safe because you have gear on is not so much the case, because you may accidentally kind of breach your gear by touching your face or something. So really just focusing on that social distancing aspect more than anything else is really the key to this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Cody.
We have update on the, on the progress of the noise control ordinance committee?
Yes, sir. We have had one meeting, but due to all the other issues we've been dealing with, with the emergency declaration, we have not had any more meetings, so we, we hope to soon.
Two meetings.
We've had two, I, I guess one since we met last, so we've had two altogether. And gone through quite much information, but not ready to make a recommendation to the board at this time.
Okay, that's great. This major garden tax referral, the interest, should you want to look into this for the debate meeting?
Yes, sir. Let me see if I can.
Do we need a motion for that, or just?
I don't have all, I don't have all the information with me, but, but you all have, all the localities have been granted, the authority to grant an extension on the real estate ties, due date, and interest. You will have to have a public hearing to do this, and it's my recommendation that we see how this month goes, and at May, you may consider, at the May meeting, you may consider scheduling a public hearing to do so. And I'll have all the details by May of how long you can extend it, because right now your due dates and penalties, and that's all set for the, the code of Virginia. So they are granting you an emergency authority to help the taxpayers and the public citizens by doing so.
The latest I looked, it was a hundred and seventeen that is signed up for unemployment. What is it, Davis?
That we won't get that, but probably every month. Yeah. I'm sure if it increases as much as it did over just two weeks, that they might send us another update. And I think most of that, you'll see, our restaurants are shut down except for to carry up, your hair salons are closed down, so you, and a lot of people are furloughed at other places that, that live in the county that might work elsewhere. So I'm hoping that it's tipped the top for right now locally, because I believe most everyone that's, that's had to shut down their, their business or operation has applied. We're, we're trying to assist them, and Ms. Edmiston is available to these people to assist them with business grants, business loan applications, and just assistance. So we have put that information out, and she stands ready to assist them through the Virginia, Longwood Small Business Assistance Program.
Okay. The Mars Building Permit Reports and the package, the C R C information, that affect of voters from Mars, their elections. Are moving out also.
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, I distributed this email that I got from a constituent of mine to you all, Mr. Frank Howan. He'd like that, along with some of the others, to be as part of the public, or, or as part of the record, if you all would permit that. And the second thing, Mr. Chairman, is, is that for a long time, our anti-litter task force has not met, and there, there are really no members on it. The, the chairman of that has resigned, and I think litter along the roadways is something that a lot of people are passionate about, or mightn't so. And so what I'd like to see us do, because we're basically going to have to reappoint everyone to the. And so what I'd like to see us do, because we're basically gonna have to reappoint everyone to that, um, at the May meeting, May the eleventh, um, I think it'd be advantageous for us to maybe bring, each bring two to three names, uh, back for appointment to the anti-litter task force, and I understand right now, due to COVID, we can't do a lot, but I think right now we can get some names and hopefully prepare, once this is all blown out, we can, uh, try to get some litter off the roadways. And, and, and I'd also like to serve on that committee, um, on behalf of the board, in terms of getting that going again. And I've talked to a lot of people, not only in my district, but in, but in y'all's districts beyond, who have a lot of interest in that. And, um, people, people are willing to pick up some, you know, and I, I think it's a good small step to take in terms of the, uh, the litter on the roads and working with VDOT, that kind of thing, so I, I do ask for that, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to, I'd say something, I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Miles to head up the anti-litter task force as far as the, uh, board supervisor is concerned.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
To represent.
Just to serve, serve on the anti-litter task force, Mr. Chairman, and try to reconstitute and get, and get members back on it.
Resurrected?
Resurrected, right, Reverend Chambers.
All right. Where members want to sit on the way?
Yeah, oh, certainly, I'll vote for anybody else.
Yep.
Baby? Go to Matthew's, we always also.
If you guys have anybody in your district that would be interested, like Mr. Miles, is.
I mentioned the next one.
Yeah, please let me know.
All right, there's been a motion, maybe a second, that, uh, Mr. Miles and Mr. Matthews, uh, you know, is out on the task force, uh, in that, in that discussion? Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Bryant?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yes.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Hi. We don't have any closed sessions in the county, so, uh.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, we do need to go in closed session, under the same, uh, code that we have there.
One board member, I'll give it right now.
Mr. Chairman, uh, we're getting, got some calls about unsightly, uh, property in my district up there on sixty, and then there was one that the board could, you know, make it clean up, sort of that.
I, Mr. Carter?
Again, that's, uh, and there's a, there's a, there's a mess that they can ride by in, up here, oh, and, oh, I forget, what's the way, the problem, the rake right there?
Uh-huh.
The little trails there, and all kind of junk in the yard and all kind of stuff like that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've, I've been talking to, uh, Ms. Edmiston about redoing an ordinance on trash and stuff in the county, so that's being worked on right now.
Thank you, sir.
As we speak. Uh, it's gonna be another month or two before we get it all together, I'm sure, but, uh, we're moving in the right direction over there.
Well, right now, we can't take any action on that.
Oh, no, 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 I'd like to bring in more.
You can't take any action, but I, I did see that email today.
Uh-huh.
And responded that we will have, we have what's called safe property ordinance, and that works in conjunction with the building inspector and the health department and solid waste management. And I think probably the judge is up determining that property, but I did say that we will have the health department and building inspector look into that.
Okay, thank you, good, you send it to, you send it to Josh, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive closed session. Under code two point two dash thirty-seven eleven dot A dot twelve, information relating to the negotiation and award of a specific contract where competition or bargaining is involved, and where the release of such information would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, such information shall not be withheld after the public body has made a decision to award or not to award the contract. In the case of procurement transactions conducted pursuant to the Virginia Public Procurement Act, two point two dash forty-three hundred, the provisions of this subdivision shall not apply, and any release of information relating to such transactions shall be governed by the Virginia Public Procurement Act.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made a second, and we go into the, uh, closed session. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Supervisor Bryant?
Yes.
Supervisor Allen?
Yeah.
Supervisor Miles?
Yes.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Secretary Allen?
Yes.
Secretary Meyer?
Yes.
Secretary Harris?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Yes.
Mr. President, I move that we return to open session and certification that the best of each board member acknowledged only business matters related to the code of which the executive meeting was convened was discussed or considered in the closed executive session.
Most ladies and gentlemen, we prepare to open session and adjournment of all the vote.
Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Matthews?
Yes.
Secretary Allen?
Yes.
Secretary Meyer?
Yes.
Yes, excuse me.
Sorry.
Yes.